Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We would like to extend to each and every one of you a very warm welcome to this special session of the sixteenth International Research Conference of General Sir John F. Talavala Defense University. Now, you are here with us in the medicine session based on the theme of digital transformation in the health delivery and medical education for integrated, enhanced, and sustainable services. This session will be chaired by Senior Professor Mirani Veerasurya. Ladies and gentlemen, we have the honor of introducing the chairperson of this session, Senior Professor Mirani Veerasurya. Senior Professor Mirani Veerasurya is the Senior Professor of Parasitology at the Faculty of Medicine at KDU, appointed after her retirement from the University of Ruhuna. She was the founder professor of parasitology at the University of Ruhuna, later promoted as the Senior Professor of Parasitology in two thousand and eight. She also served as the Dean, Faculty of Graduate Studies at the University of Ruhuna, and after her retirement in two thousand and twenty-one, was awarded the emeritus professorship from the University of Ruhuna. She has also served KDU as the Dean, Faculty of Allied Health Sciences. Her research program initiated on phylorhyosis, which was supported by twenty-four research grants, resulted in forty-five publications in referred journals, six chapter contributions to textbooks, and hundred-and-ten published abstracts of presentations. She has won thirty-six competitive research awards. These include five awards from Sri Lanka Medical Association, from the Goll Medical Association Best Research Presentation Award on twelve occasions, Presidential Research Award on six occasions, and National Research Council Award on five different occasions. She won the Sri Lanka Association for Advancement of Sciences General Research Committee in two thousand and three, and Vice Chancellor's Award at University of Ruhuna as the Most Outstanding Scholar in two thousand and five. She also won the Zonta Woman of Achievement Award in Medicine in two thousand and eleven. She has delivered three very prestigious orations: Goll Medical Association Oration, Sri Lanka Medical Association Oration, and the Health Research Prize Oration of the Kandy Society of Medicine. In two thousand and four, she was elected as a Fellow of the National Academy of Sciences of Sri Lanka. As a result of all these research achievements, the university grants commission approved the establishment of the Phylorhyosis Research Training and Service Unit at the University of Ruhuna in two thousand and five. It is our pleasure to invite Senior Professor Mirani Veerasurya to commence the session.
Thank you for that introduction. And let me first welcome all of you for this very important special session in medicine. And today, we have two eminent speakers lined up for this session. The first speaker is Professor Leland Hartwell from USA, who is a Nobel Prize winner in medicine in two thousand and one. And I think it's a rare opportunity for us to listen to a Nobel Prize winner. And his presentation will be online, and it will be a question and answer session. And it will be conducted by Dr. Aruna Darshan Desilva, who is the Chairperson of the IRC, our conference, and also Senior Lecturer of Faculty of Medicine and an excellent researcher of Faculty of Medicine. So we will have that session first, and we will be answering our questions. Then you will also get an opportunity to question a Nobel Prize winner. Then the second presentation will be by Professor Vajira Veera Singh, a former dean, faculty of medicine, and a former Deputy Vice Chancellor of University of Perage. And he will, and let me invite Professor Vajira Veera Singh to speak. And after his presentation, there will be another panel discussion of fifteen minutes on his presentation, and after that, a summing up session. So that is what we have lined up for today's special session. And let me now invite Dr. Aruna Darshan Desilva, who is the Chairperson of the IRC, to introduce Professor Leland Hartwell, and then to start the question and answer session.
Good evening, Professor Leland. My name is Darshan Desilva. Hopefully you can see me. I will be conducting the question and answer session. Okay, thank you. Professor Leland Hartwell was born October thirtieth, nineteen thirty-nine, Los Angeles, California, and is a former president and director of the Fred Hutchinson Cancer Research Center in Seattle, Washington. He shared the two thousand and one Nobel Prize in Physiology or Medicine with Paul Nurse and Tim Hahn for their discoveries of protein molecules that control the division of cells. Professor Hartwell was born in nineteen thirty-nine in Los Angeles, California, and raised in the state of California, USA. He received his Bachelor of Science degree from the California Institute of Technology, more popularly known as Caltech, in nineteen sixty-one. In nineteen sixty-four, he received his Doctor of Philosophy in Biology from the Massachusetts Institute of Technology of MIT from nineteen sixty-five to nineteen sixty-eight. He worked at the University of California, Irvine, as a professor. He moved to the University of Washington in nineteen sixty-eight. In a series of experiments from nineteen seventy to seventy-one, he discovered the cell deletion cycle genes in baker's yeast. These genes regulate the cell cycle and mutation in the genes and are involved in some types of cancer. He became a member of the National Academy of Sciences in nineteen eighty-seven, and in nineteen ninety-six, joined the Faculty of Fred Hutchinson Cancer Research Center. And in nineteen ninety-seven, became its president and director until he retired in two thousand and eight. A few of his many other honors include the Albert Lasker Basic Medical Research Award, the Gardner Foundation International Award, and the Alfred T. Stone Award in Cancer Research. Currently, Professor Hartwell is a professor at Arizona State University focusing on the area of education. Welcome, sir. Can you hear me properly?
Yes, a little, not real well, but I've got the captions on too.
I will speak slowly, sir, so that you can understand. Can you understand?
Yes, that's good.
I went through very quickly with your introduction to say fine.
Thank you.
So I will start with the first question. So, Professor Hartwell, you won a Nobel Prize in two thousand and one for Physiology or Medicine for your discovery on cell cycle protein that controls cell division. Can you briefly explain some of the details and the significance of this contribution to science?
Well, yes, of course, cell division is very fundamental to all of biology. And at the time that we began this work, very little was understood about the components of the cell that controlled cell division. We were able to identify many genes that participate in controlling cell division by using yeast cells. Yeast cells are eukaryotic cells like human cells, but they're wonderful to do genetics with because they divide as either haploid cells or diploid cells, and they reproduce very rapidly. So we were able to find temperature-sensitive mutants that at the high temperature where a protein was inactivated, the cell would stop at some point in the cell cycle. And that was the point at which that protein was needed.
Thank you, sir. Actually, you answered one of my next questions as well, because I was going to ask you, why yeast? We don't work with yeast that often in Sri Lanka. And I was going to ask you, why yeast and not any other mammalian cells? But you actually addressed that as well. Do you want to add anything else to that, sir?
Just that, for the students out there who are thinking of research careers, what was really wonderful about working with yeast was how rapidly you could do experiments. And that made it really fun. And so I really recommend that people doing science consider the turnaround time. That is, how long it takes to plan an experiment and do it and get a result. And the shorter that is, the more fun the research is.
Yes, sir. I would agree with you. We, I also am a researcher, and I try to pick cells and things in the very short term over time, that is. Thank you. We actually have a large number of students here as well. They are mostly candidates. If we can hand over and just show the audience as well, that would be good. So my next question, sir, is actually related to this. I was going to ask, it's been over twenty years now since you won the Nobel Prize. And I was discussing with some of faculty members, your findings actually still apply today. I have actually read some of your papers when I was in graduate school in the US. And the G zero, G one checkpoint, I mean, basically it came from your work. Is that correct? Can you name some direct applications today that actually came from your work? I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of drugs which have been developed and directly applied to cancer. We have a hospital here, and it would be very nice to link your basic discoveries to what we are using today as medicine.
Yes, well, that's true, that many of the cancer drugs, what people call the targeted drugs, are against proteins that participate in different steps of the cell cycle. We did not discover all of those, but the methods were useful for many people who identified many proteins that are being targeted for cancer patients. I think the other thing that is interesting is that cancer is a disease of the cell cycle in the sense that cells make mutations and rearrange chromosomes and become very rapidly evolving. And that's really at the basis of cancer. So understanding how the cell controls the cycle and how it assures the accuracy of the cell cycle is also fundamental to understanding the basic aspects of cancer. And we were quite interested in understanding how the accuracy of cell division was controlled.
Thank you, sir. Is it possible to have the door closed? It disturbs everything. Thank you. Sir, I want to switch gears now to talk a little bit about the science education. Your talk yesterday was very illuminating. And you are more engaged in science education than active research in recent days. Can you briefly talk about, you know, teaching? Because we are primarily a teaching institute. There's a few people like you who are very actively involved in research. We would like to, the audience is different from yesterday. So here we have more academics and it's teaching staff and et cetera. We would love to hear your advice and comments on that.
Sure. You know, what I was trying to say yesterday was that it's very important to get students interested and motivated. And they do that by asking their own questions. And so I think science is most interesting when we begin with a phenomenon like cell division, and we ask questions about it. You know, for example, how is it controlled? And how is the accuracy maintained? And questions like that. And education has been, in the past, largely about providing students with information about what we already know. But science is not about what we know. Science is about what we don't know. And so I think it's very important to engage students early in science in asking questions about things that are still mysterious and how we might begin to tinker and plan experiments to try to answer our questions.
Thank you, sir. Now, you have started this program called Science of Me. Can you say a few words about that, sir?
Well, what I chose to use as a subject for the phenomena that we don't understand was sensory perception and cognition, largely because it doesn't require any fancy equipment, and we can do it with our computer. But it also has the great interest that these are things that we're interested in. How do we see? How do we hear? How do we make sense of what we see and what we hear? How do we remember them? And we're studying how we create stories and communicate stories to one another, which I think are the basis of science. Because stories are sort of a series of causal events, where one thing causes another, and science is interested in causality. So I'm very interested in trying to help what many others are doing as well is to introduce this kind of questioning and what's called inquiry science into much younger ages. What we have here is middle school is usually where people decide whether they're interested in science or not. And that's around the ages of, you know, ten to thirteen or so. And so we need to engage kids at that age in the mysteries that still exist, as well as what we know.
Can I ask you to repeat? You gave a great example yesterday about eclipses and, you know, prediction of earthquakes, et cetera. Can I ask you to expand on, I mean, just briefly mention and highlight the difference between known and unknown? I thought that was a wonderful example. Thank you.
Yeah, well, as I say, science is concerned with what we don't know, with the unknown. And that often seems kind of hard to think about because it's unknown. How do we, how do we think about it? Well, the way we think about the unknown is we start with the known. And so we need a definition of the known. And science has a very rigorous definition of the known. It's what we can predict. The accuracy with which we can predict the future is the way we evaluate our science. And so what I mentioned yesterday was that we're very good at predicting eclipses. And that shows that planetary motion is part of our known. So we can now look then at what phenomena exist that are part of our unknown. And I mentioned earthquakes as an example. Earthquakes are ever bit as dramatic and well appreciated as eclipses, but we can't predict them. And since we can't predict them, they're part of the unknown. They're still a mystery and a subject of active science.
Thank you. One of the concerns that interest in science has slowly been going down. I think globally that is an issue. Do you really think that is a concern, or is there anything you think we should do about that?
I'm not sure how our interests are changing. I think we're very interested in many of the problems that face the next generation, like climate change and extinction of animals and various problems of food security and things like that. These are really science problems as well. Social problems are science problems. We tend to think of these things as less, perhaps, science because they're still largely unknown. That is, their solutions are unknown. Human behavior is largely unknown, and so we consider human behavior part of the arts. But really, human behavior is the cutting edge of the unknown in science that we need to apply ourselves to if we're going to solve the problems that face us in the future. So the issue may not be so much a lack of interest in science as maybe a lack of interest in the subjects that science has been preoccupied with in the past and a need to become interested in the subjects that science needs to dedicate itself to in the future.
Right. Thank you. So basically, you are saying we should expand our topics. We are still stuck in the traditional subjects and topics. So I have noticed that you are at a place which has the BioDesign Institute, Center for Sustainable Health. So I think we, as you said, we need to definitely expand. I will raise one more question, sir, and then I would put it to the audience if they have questions. I have many more questions, but I'd like to give them a chance to ask as well. One of the things is, in your Nobel Prize, the website, it mentions in your blog that you're good at maths, physics, and like mechanical drawing. And then you enrolled as a physics major in Caltech. Then you changed to biology because of some interest. Now, unfortunately, in a lot of our Sri Lankan university systems, we can't do such a change, actually. It's rather rigid. And I wanted your comments on this as how to, how being able to switch fields like this will enhance innovation and research and discovery.
Yeah, so I think it's very important that students be able to begin their university education very broadly and find those things that interest them, and then find their major. It's, it's, you know, what, success in science or any field only comes if you're highly motivated and very interested in it. And so if you get locked into a subject that you're not interested in, you're just not going to be successful. We need to give everyone the opportunity to change their interests and go where their interests are leading them and where their motivation is.
So basically, you are saying you should allow them to go where their heart tells you to go, and they will succeed there.
Exactly, yes.
I have many more questions, but I'd like to open it up to the audience to see if they have any particular questions. Do we have a mic ready? Yes. This is, I happen to know, the doctor Pandula Attaudarji. He's one of our cardiologists here, and he will ask the question.
Professor Hartwell, I'm an old world academic who has been able to slowly move on to the new technologies that have been developing in the area of education. But now, I'm a little concerned about the newer trends. I mean, I think the web was a magnificent technological innovation. But now we are in the stage of artificial intelligence, chat GPT, where I feel that there is a danger of knowledge, existing knowledge. You talked about unknown, which is the most important. But existing knowledge moving from the web or other sources of knowledge, or primary or secondary sources of knowledge, directly into the new developments in knowledge without passing through the human brain, the student brain. People are seeking knowledge now. I remember you said yesterday that the technology is developing so rapidly that you can't even predict what happens in the next ten years. So in that environment, I see that some dangers to human development and progress of knowledge. How do you see it?
Yes, I think this is something that concerns everyone. The rate at which technology is changing and the power of technology. I would just say a couple of things. One is, I am amazed at the way each new generation is able to master everything that was known before and move forward. It's a wonderful phenomenon of the human mind. And we do it by generalizing. We assimilate enormous new ideas and generalize on them and move forward. It's, we haven't yet found the limits of the human mind to assimilate and move on. And so I'm not too worried about that. The second thing is, I think that any technology is just a tool and can be used for good or bad. And that we always need to use it for good. And as the technologies become more powerful, it's, of course, greater concern that people will use it for bad reasons. And we just need to make every effort in society and government to be sure that that doesn't happen.
Do we have time for one more question?
Professor Hartwell, thank you very much for joining online. I would like to pick your brains about cardiovascular medicine and aging and senescence and regeneration. That's one of the areas of interest I have, and I'm sure you'll have lots of insight with your cell cycle work, work on cell cycle, multiple cell multiplication and aging. Where do you see with the current trends that we have, the epigenetic and genetic modulation, senescence, in the next twenty years, do you think there will be viable targets for research yourself, coming up with solutions to senescence? And where do you see regenerative medicine is heading?
Well, I don't think that I have any crystal ball to make great insights and predictions. What amazes me is how much more we accomplish with each decade than anybody anticipated. Think about, you know, when I was a student, was uh was about the time uh that the structure of DNA was discovered. And no one could ever have imagined that we would have the complete sequence of uh human uh DNA for any individual with, for a few hundred dollars now. Uh, it's just mind boggling. Uh, and I'm sure that um things will be accomplished in the decades ahead that we can't even imagine. Uh, Science Magazine used to have um a predictions thing each year where scientists would predict what was going to happen in the next year. And the predictions were always so boring. They were always just a slight bit ahead of what we were already doing. Uh, and people never foresee the tremendous advances that are made. Um, I guess, I guess the, the people who do that are, are science fiction writers. And perhaps that's where we should be looking for the future.
Thank you, thank you very much actually. That was one of the questions I had as well. I would like, in the interest of time, I would like to close the session now and our vice chancellor, I invite our vice chancellor to thank you for hearing the question to speak with him. Good morning to everybody. Good morning, Professor Leila Hartwell. On behalf of the fraternity of medical students and scholars and all persons here, that I would like to extend a heartfelt gratitude to you for accepting our invitation and participating in these two days amidst your other commitments. Thank you very much, sir, for that your generous and genuine concerns on us to give us your vast knowledge and share your thoughts with us for our young generation to prosper and learn the subject that is medicine. Your insight is very useful and your thoughts are very well taken by all of us. I'm sure that the students here also say yesterday that your talk, the ideas that you have disseminated are very well taken by all our participants. Once again, thank you very much for your assistance and your professional contribution towards the success of 16th International Research Conference held in this year. Thank you, sir.
We will close the session, sir. Thank you, great sir, and good night.
I have to put in the job intervention, the second speaker, that is Professor Vajira Bhirasimh. Professor Vajira Bhirasimh is the senior professor of physiology at Thakotam Medicine, University of Perabeniya and consultant neurophysiologist at Keating Hospital, Perabeniya. As a proud graduate of Thakotam Medicine, University of Perabeniya, he later obtained his PhD in neurophysiology from University of Southampton, UK in 1995. He was appointed as the Chair Professor of Physiology in 2009. He was also the former Dean, Thakotam Medicine, University of Perabeniya and former Deputy Vice Chancellor of the University of Perabeniya. He has done his postdoctoral research studies at the Clinical Neurophysiology Unit at King's College, London's School of Medicine. And during this illustrious academic career, has published more than 70 research articles in high impact journals, published two books and has made more than 50 research communications and presentations in Sri Lanka and overseas. Professor Bhirasimh has delivered three prestigious orations, namely Seneca Bibliet Memorial Oration of Cancer Society of Medicine, K M Sinirath Memorial Oration and A C Memorial Oration, Physiological Society of Sri Lanka. He also has won Presidential Research Award for Scientific Research, Cancer Society of Medicine Health Research Prize and Sterbology Award of Honor Prize. Professor Bhirasimh was the president of Physiological Society of Sri Lanka in 2004 and 2008 and president of Cancer Society of Medicine 2009. Let me now invite Professor Vajira Bhirasimh to deliver a speaker lecture on the versatility of neuromuscular junction from arrow poison to isinjani pokeys.
Good morning. Thank you, Professor Leila Bhirasimh. My good friend Jaa Hassan, thank you for the introduction. Senior professors from the Thakotam Medicine, most of my good friends, we have the staff from the Thakotam Medicine, medical students. I think I will take a leave from what Professor Leila Hartwell said. One of course is just talking about unknown, from unknown to known. So today in this presentation, we will be more scientific, going into an unknown area and then showing how research contributed. And then of course, my good friend, what Professor Sediti Minis question about the science and how to keep it going and some others also asked. I think why, what I'm showing, this is a fascination. As long as you have fascination in the body, in the environment, in the science, I mean, the science will continue to grow. And at least there is one way of, you know, keeping this scientific trend going. So today in this presentation, I will talk about the fascination of neural structure, which most of us know. Even the students, I think, if you open a biology book, you know, about neuromuscular junction, the connection between the somatic nerve and skeletal muscle. I'm not talking about cardiac muscle connection or the smooth muscle connection. And then showing how this fascinating connection, various examples from the arrow poison historically to snaphrotes that you wanted to be toxic with the permission of the Madame Jaa Hassan, I have added my title. One of the most recent research, Indimje on a chip. I think this is now on N A Ts. Well, uh, neuromuscular junction is a fascinating relation between somatic nerve and skeletal muscle. In this picture I have shown, left hand side, the right index picture. Or very simple, I'm sure you will agree, very simple neuromuscular junction, presynaptic membrane, synaptic gap and the postsynaptic membrane and then the inside which we use, that's what we know from biology. But the right side, which is much more complex than that. The number of proteins are much more than what we think. We thought it's a test of receptor and receptor protein. Later on I talk about myasthenia gravis. Some, some of these things have come from the medical treatment. You try to treat the myasthenia gravis, standard treatment, it doesn't work. Then you realize there are other proteins, like musk protein and so on. So the primary function of course is that Indimje is enabled muscle contraction, contraction allowing us to move and perform various tasks. From simple actions by taking up a basic to complex activities, movements, going on, respiration, swallow drinks, meat. Now respiratory problem is the main problem with the diseases that I'm going to show you. Many of these neuromuscular junctions where you get respiratory arrest and poor death rates. So therefore, it requires a good scientific understanding of this. Structurally and functionally, this is the fascination comes. It is the same everywhere in the body. It's of course the old theory of like a lock and key, key lock theory. Uh, so this is same, therefore drug given would block all the neuromuscular junctions at once. This is used by snakes, don't you relate to nature, to kill the prey without giving poisons to other parts of the nervous system or increase. The nature puts a chemical which will block, and it many blocks respiratory muscles, it gives the death of the prey. So that is the importance of this. Therefore, it has many versatile uses in many natural situations as well as in therapeutic applications which are given in this presentation. And uh, basically we start with the historical arrow poison and then going into the natural venom, as well as names and other uh animals, particularly the professor from Australia. And we have done several studies, particularly neurophysiological studies like Indian brain, Bangor, Zerodias, I later showed you. And then of course the standard myasthenia gravis, I literally talk about. Then the, we come from the nature of the diseases to the therapeutic, to the operating, we had the anesthesia. Now in anesthesia, anesthesia is therapeutic only. One of the drugs is neuromuscular junction blocker, attrituria, that the game is getting more and more advanced now. Then the viracule has struck, what it means a toxin. Many of people who wants to keep vegetation of the skin, they use what it would be toxic. It's a toxin, it works in the neuromuscular junction, yeah. Then of course, the sad story of our country, not that ago, of course, 2000, of course, they have come down. We were the number one in the suicide rate in the country, world, and the death rate is also very high. And one of the commonest suicide compounds is propionate phosphate and that is also causing neuromuscular junction. Later talk of details. Then come to the more newer discoveries, where they have been able to make Indimje on a chip and actually see real time how neuromuscular junction work. Okay, let's start with the history, the arrow poison. Historically, the most well-known arrow poison, the perfect enemy, is curadi. And Indian strikes in South America, such as the Amazon rainforest region. They, they go to the jungle, they leave a plant which has the poison and they take it from various species, an acridoid, and put it to the arrow and then send the arrow to the animal and then sometimes the animal kills, kills instantly, it's a small bird and lead it to neuromuscular junction blocking muscle paralysis. So this is one of the, before knowing any mechanism, this is something that people are using all the time. So they are, the neuromuscular junctions are blocked. Then we come to the snake venom. Snake venom contains neurotoxins that can affect the neuromuscular junction. Of course, snake venom can have many other effects on the hematological side, the vascular effects, the kidney, the renal effect. But neurotoxin particularly the crate, they put up the pachyse crate, caravalia and the Indian crane and the sidon crane, the Bangor zerodias and Bangor zerodicas. And this contains the toxins which, neurotoxin should block the neuromuscular junction. These toxins can lead to muscle paralysis, real cases of this created earlier. And we have done few studies sometime ago when Professor Sima Sinan was the dean of the Thakotam Medicine, Perabeniya. We went to, we are North Central Province, the place where this freight, it was very common. And when you go there, we took machines. Now my experience is electromyography and some, there was a colleague, he is, we took, long time ago, 25 years ago. Then there, and sat on the hospital, they had a colleague to sample it there. And the patients were coming to the ICU with various name, particularly rice season. And then we looked at there, what is the pathology? And Indian prey, particularly the paper we presented at the Cannabis Society, they are being shown. Of course, what we do is stimulate the nerve, the nerve muscle junction, and then we look at the response. Normally, the response is being stimulated, the same response. And later on I'll show you myasthenia, you did a decrement, because that's what I call a loss. Here in this, we saw a decrement, incremental, decrement, increment pattern, it's called big. And that was later, our colleagues in the Perabeniya Toxicology Center, Professor Indika Gavramane, published a paper in Journal of Medical基础 Works on Sidon, Sidon crane, Bangor zerodicas in West India, Sri Lanka, resulting in neuromuscular paralysis, where I had most of the neuromuscular junction. So the, the crate, the snake venom can block the neuromuscular junction. But it's more than that. Now, my colleague Professor Samford, I've dated his studies, where the Sidon crane, Bangor zerodicas, we thought the Indian crane is more venomous and Sidon crane is of course much less common. But still, it also can cause acute neuromuscular paralysis, rhabdomyolysis, the muscles in the body can make damage with the Indian crane and a long-lasting neurological disease. And recently, we have a collaborative collaboration with Tamra Altu, particularly Professor Anjali Simba. And where we looked at the hipnoid, hipnoid, ampnose viper, which is even known as a non-venomous snake. But however, it also causes some kind of mild neurological problem. And using our neurophysiologic techniques, we saw there is a clinical neuromuscular dysfunction. And you can see one of the collaborators from the Michael Sebik, who has been an advisor for us. He was my PhD advisor in UK from, from the University of Southampton. With that, we have developed some neurophysiologic techniques to help this disease. We have our own treatment, where we have to first find out what is the pathogenesis and pathology of this snake killer. From this, I will move on to the standard disease, from the nature of the diseases. Myasthenia gravis, you can see the critical feature of closing, predictability. Myasthenia gravis now known as a motoriatic neuromuscular disorder, that starts in the beginning of skeletal muscles. Primarily, antibodies in the system attacking receptors at the neuro. Our own immune system attacking the receptors and leading to impaired muscle retraction. Antibodies start the structures within the Indimje. And the known antigens of course, well known as the receptor receptors. But, but then in the failure treatment, people want to see whether there are other proteins in the neuromuscular junction. Then to see their specific, muscle-specific kindness. So there is a group of myasthenia gravis, which is musk antibodies. So therefore, if you are testing antibodies for myasthenia gravis, just testing a set of antibodies is not enough. It's not available in the health sector, but the private hospital can still look and do. Where you have to test for musk antibodies. Recent research have shown some more proteins are there. And the antibodies are those proteins, particularly L R P four, lipoprotein, receptor-labeled protein four and so on. And we have done studies, of course, that myasthenia gravis is a clinical diagnosis. But the severely and other part can be investigated using neurophysiologic technique. And you can see this slide, what we have done is we have taken, taken stimuli in the nerve. You can see it is probably, it's a incremental, standard incremental pattern, see in myasthenia gravis. It's called repetitive nerve stimulation case. But however, the sensitivity of this test is low, some other diseases also this can be presented. So the, from the E N G pioneer, Professor Tholberg, who had developed the single fiber E N G, be the gold standard in neurophysiology for investigating the myasthenia gravis. Where you can actually measure from the one single fiber E N G activity and then you give a, then you ask the person to make a slight contraction. Particularly if you do four arms, six days' source, and then repeated, repeated activity gives a single fiber, a different action potential. Remember, your physiology, it should be the same. But actually, when you went to a normal person, there is a slight variation when you make a contraction. We don't contract the muscle, except the same, even though our contraction is the same. That was the beginning and that variation is called jitter, that jitter is visual. And the jitter is measured in microscales, the variation should be less than about 20 microscales. More than that, that means there's a set of calling failure, that is the theory. Of course, the very expensive technique, the single fiber, the technique is very expensive and you cannot steadyize it. There are other methods needed and many centers have started doing, using a normal E N G needle. We have developed Perabeniya, the similar, yes, what is called stimulated single fiber E N G using normal E N G needle. There are what we do without, because the patient, myasthenia gravis, otherwise will be, you know, unconscious or semi-conscious. You can't ask, they present contraction. Here what you do is without asking the patient, you stimulate the nerve electrically. Another needle will stimulate the nerve electrically. One needle will record the single fiber activity, then you can measure the jitter. So that is called stimulated single fiber E N G using concentrated needle. And here publications later I will show you how we have. Yeah, from the, I would just like to, what are the other Indimje disorders? Of course, standard one is myasthenia gravis. Then a rare disease is lamberdip mastitis syndrome or leps, which are paraneo plastic sometimes. They are just a presynaptic disorder. In the neuromuscular junction, there's a switch, the switch is talsim. What they have, talsim channels are presenting presynaptic membrane, very open zone in the neuromuscular junction will birth. And in these patients, there are antibodies against talsim. And therefore, the patient has various features, of course, it's rare. So the pathology is not well delineated beyond And therefore, the patient has various features, of course, it's rare, so the pathology is not well delineated beyond that. Then of course, you have much rare diseases like neuromyotonia or isex syndrome. Their patient is slight tremors or trembling and they are, you know, your physiology, potassium channel is hypopolarization. Sodium channel is the one which causes depolarization, standard neurophysiology. So potassium channels are downregulated in these disease. And when the potassium channels are downregulated, then the sodium channels are opening. Therefore, you will have an excitiviti, known as myoflina or neuromyotonia. And I don't have a video facility here, you can see it's slightly trembling. And then of course, body olism, we talk about bodily toxin later. But body olism is a serious disorder of the neurotoxin, it's a presynaptic disorder. And the bodily toxin enters into the presynaptic membrane and binds to proteins and prevent release of acid alcohol. I will show you picture later. Tetanus, it's slightly, it's diagnosed, tetanus is also presynaptic disorder. Blocking, but here it is not blocking neuromuscular junction, it is blocking other signants, immune to signants, particularly DABA, which is the universal inhibitor in the brain and nervous system, blising, when inhibition is reduced, then you get high excitivity causing the genetic muscle contractions. Now, let's now come from the diseases to the operating theater, to the anesthesia is too deep. Now, my cure here is a derivative of curare and it is a medication used as a neuromuscular blocking agent during anesthesia. And it temporarily paralyzes the little muscles, which is beneficial during surgery to facilitate intubation and prevent involuntary muscle movement. All of us know about it, but there are problems with atrachuria, there are from ever and ever neuromuscular junction blockers are being developed and rocuronia, ventruronium and so on because there are side effect. Now, this animation will show you. Normally, our acid alcohol binds and sodium channel opens and the activity happens. And when there is due to curare, it's the lock can be concept, physically it blocks the acid alcohol receptor. So the acid alcohol cannot work, sodium channel doesn't open and it blocks. So this is the standard competitive blocking agent, of course, this takes a while. Therefore, more and more blocking agents have been developed, like liporase blocking agents which work with the tube seconds and so on. Right, from there, I will now come to the miraculous drug, which is the bodily toxin. Which historically, there was an eye surgeon who wanted to treat stenismus. And when one muscle is working, overworking, other muscle is paralyzed, the theory is to paralyze the muscle that is working. So he was using alcohol and many things, suddenly one, well, of course, this is again with that to Professor Hartler, the fascination of science, he is, all of a sudden, he uses bodily toxin and it worked. From that time, one year bodily toxin was used as a muscle paralysis. Of course, now it's not used for stenismus, although we have done one patient in the hospital, eye surgeon, long time ago. But it's more common, it's more immunization specimens, V A L P specimen, blepharos specimen, then cerviculodystonia, all kinds of muscle overactivity, there are the theories, there is too much of acid alcohol. So by giving bodily toxin, you can actually block the neuromuscular junction. So commonly marketed as both of the bodily toxin, it's a neurotoxin produced by the vacillating prosthetic bodily venom. They use in small controlled doses, it can temporarily paralyze muscles. And is often used for cosmetic purposes, of course, to reduce wrinkles and medical treatments for conditions such as muscle spasms and migraines, we use in our neurophysiology laboratory for the medical situations where there is crease specimen. Plastic surgeons are authorized to use it for wrinkles. However, the theory is again, the wrinkling is due to tiny muscle contractions over here. I don't know how, it's not proven yet, but when you inject bodily toxin, the wrinkles disappear. All this gross wing and everything disappears, even in our patients who are, of course, intelligent patients, sometimes the patient specimen, we inject, the next day, the next two weeks, within a week, the patient is brought back and these wrinkles are disappeared. Of course, then it has gone into even other avenues. Of course, I'll come to that later, mechanism of action is mainly blocking release of acid alcohol. And I will show you a picture and then come back to the previous slide. This slide shows how normally neuromuscular junction birth. Neuromuscular junction, now it's another part of fascination, it's a duck yard. The neuromuscular junction, physicals are like ships, ships boarding in the presynaptic membrane, waiting for somebody to dock it to the presynaptic membrane, then only calcium can cause exorcitalism. Now, we did not know who is actually bringing this ship to the duck yard. With bodily toxin, people just use it, later on, the research came, what is the action of bodily toxin? Then already realized there are not the proteins, short proteins called neoproteins, which are present in the neuromuscular junction. You, of course, the Gaddong is the standard medical physiology book you use, long edition, previous editions of Gaddong if you look at. It doesn't mention about this protein, those days, we did not, we thought calcium is doing it. But actually, calcium is at the end doing exorcitalism. It is the short protein, you can see this tiny protein which will actually attach to the physical and bring it physical, which is called docking. And these proteins, we are very known, snap twenty five, snap to three, and see, and see. And what bodily toxin do is bodily toxin is reserve the purple carbon here, which can internally switch to the presynaptic membrane. And then of course, it goes into hydrodysine and then it will clean, it will clean these proteins. Cut the protein into pieces, once the proteins are gone, the ship will just remain in the harbor at some of our hours here, which cannot be docked and which cannot be used, so the neuromuscular junction does not work. But the trouble is, nature always give remedy, now you don't think it's a permanent cure. You want to be each way, you put bodily toxin, your wrinkles disappear because the person who gives the plastic surgeon charge huge amount of money. After three months, the patient or this actress goes back and say, my neighbors have come back. Yeah, this is only temporary, after three months, what happens is neuromuscular junction is connected to the cell body. And they are talking to each other. So when the neuromuscular junction is not working, there's a ventricle break, plasma flow to the cell body informing, it is not working. So what does the cell body do? It will make a new neuromuscular junction. It takes about three months before and your problem will come back again. So you have a routine every three months, whatever amount of money you are spending. So that is release of acid alcohol. But later, people thought we use protein, migraine and we use it for post-hepatic neurgia, triglycerid neurgia. So because neuromuscular junction is body fight signant, it's exactly similar to signant, the words are presynaptic, post-synaptic. So if it works for acid alcohol, it might work for what? Substance B, our old pain substance, blue damage, which is also pain causing substance, calcium, calcium intubated peptide C G R P, which is the hybrid of migraine now, other research has shown. And this bodily toxin blocks these signants also. Therefore, it is used to lead certain pain situations. There are experimental evidence that, that's not even on muscle spittle, muscle spittle which is the one which poses specificity. The patient who has specific pain, patient stroke, there is increased specificity. By giving bodily toxin, you can actually reduce the spittle activity, increasing the sensitivity of the interfacial muscle fibers and stretch, threshold is increased. So our physiology books have to be reading now, the threshold, the spittle sensitivity is a dynamic thing. So this will bring the threshold up, therefore, the specificity we use. Nowadays, we do a study, we have done study, most of the studies now, we know the body dimension. Long term, we need a, these patients are coming, ten years, ten years, so some of the study that we published in regular neurophysiology. More than ten years, every three months, we are injected to see the efficacy and the side effect. There is a danger, can cause wasting, where they are actually locking the muscles, so if there is no muscle activity, you can get wasting. For this patient, it's my, that much. Now, we come to the unfortunate part of the fascination with neuromuscular junction, suicide. And as I told you for many years, Sri Lanka had a price for bodily trade from suicides. Main cause of suicide in Sri Lanka has been the organophosphate. The story that, the study we did at Tamra, the story is, their farmer's house and the father is a farmer and the suicide bottle is there in their house. And the child, girl or boy has quarrel with the mother, slightest quarrel, our society is quarreling with our women. And then, what she does, if she want to take out the life, she goes to the front of the house, take the incident bottle and drink. And then, of course, what they said to the organophosphate inhibiting the acid alcohol in a space. Our old derelict physiology books talk about when the acid alcohol is over, inside comes a producing scavenger, which is the acid alcohol in a space. What organophosphate do is it will block, it will inhibit that inside, the scavenger. Therefore, acid alcohol level will accumulate and increase acid alcohol can block. Little amount of acid alcohol is good, it will cause the neuromuscular junction to work, but too much of acid alcohol can cause what is called a depolarizing block. Within few seconds, the neuromuscular junction can be blocked. Initially, you get a specimen and then you get a few, you can see a patient who has OB coming to your ICU or hospital. You will see, they come in the specimen, initially and then later was the disease. Now, Professor Nimanshananayake at Peredani University and Professor Daksan Karadia, some of you know. They were following up these patients long time ago and they had a paper in Lancet and they are, but they saw us, OB patients coming to the hospital, immediately give the treatment, they are okay, third, fourth day, they feel okay and you are discharged in them. Of course, later they showed, later they come back after about six, seven weeks with polyneuropathy. So two symptoms are known, published, known for OB, that is acute polyneuropathy and the second one, delayed polyneuropathy. Now, these two are both scientists, they were following up these patient, now third or fourth day, patient is about to go. In the middle of the night, they took calls and say, the patient is back, got prescriptive arrest, they gave, repeated to ICU. So then you see, they are about after third, fourth day, the patient is about to go, prescriptive arrest to them. And later, they use the term intermediate syndrome, between active polyneuropathy classes and delayed polyneuropathy. The third neuro, neurological problem in OP is the intermediate syndrome. And the pathology of that is still unknown. So we have done studies using our technique of stimulated single fiber E N G. And they are recently located with Prasagaramana, the muscle died now. We went to Dore, Dore is another place where lots of patients come with OB poisoning. And Professor Gavramana and I stayed in Dore the hospital sometime ago. And you have to do this study at the forefront, not pick the hospital far away because there are, when the patients immediately come. Then only you can see, we did study and we saw, this is the normal jitter, you can't even see. It's less than ten microseconds, the normal jitter. And this is a patient, yeah, there is more than here, we have, we have published it plus science and plus one, and in clinical toxicology, the jitter apparently is about thirty three point three four microseconds. Beyond that, there is a neuromuscular junction failure and increased jitter. Okay, from there, I think the last part of my talk is on the recent development of neuromuscular junction. Now, another part of this fascination, so the science will be always, there are a few developed in this fascination, of course, I learned it from my good professor, Valentina Basnaiken, the fascination of the nature and of the human body. The new discoveries of neuromuscular junction, as you know, it's a critical connection between ordinary neurons and skeletal muscle fibers. It plays a vital role in muscle contraction. Well, people have seen shonses, I'm sure, so you know, shonses is a cell which secretes mind. Of course, in this diagram, you see a shonses secreting mind. But they, they saw shonses very close to the neuromuscular junction, not secreting mind. They are not mindening the shonses, terminal shonses, they are called very synaptic shonses, P S Es, which are glial cells. Glial cells are the ones which are providing food to the neurons at the neuromuscular junction. Morphological and functional adaptability to ensure NMD stability and NMD repair. NMD is a very dynamic thing, so therefore, unique states that we deal with, yeah, and that is done by terminal shonses. And people have looked at diseases like ALS, MND, I'll talk about that in the next slide, the motor neuron disease, which are far away, we never thought motor neuron disease will have any neuromuscular junction pathology. And muscular dystrophy, later I will show you in slide, that had no, nothing to do with NMD, NMD thought is normal. But now this research has changed and they have seen abnormal changes or lack of changes to have better delivery on NMDs in ALS. That NMD D M, the Duchenne muscular dystrophy, I'll show you next slide. And the effect of NMD on ALS. But to study it, it's very difficult to do it on a patient. So they had to resort to an actual mini kit, the neuromuscular junction on a chip. So now, the most recent research have shown, they take a muscle part, they take the nerve part and they actually make, using various types of very high-tech fluid, give you a NMD on a chip, which I'll show you next three slides, some of that. Most research have, first, we talk about the Duchenne muscular dystrophy. You can see on the top right hand side, clear, the general covers sign, clearly, where the child cannot stand up. And that is Duchenne muscular dystrophy and which is caused by the absence of the protein dystrophy. I'll come back to this slide after showing this, sorry, go. Now, dystrophy is another muscle protein that was seen, going from the neuromuscular junction out into the, from the muscle out into the connective tissue, just like the anchoring function here of a sheep. So if you take the sacrolyma, the covering of the muscle and this dystrophy is deficient in these patients. And studies show that alteration in neuromuscular junction, dystrophic muscle play a role in muscle weakness by entire amount of neuromuscular transmission. And NMD on a chip, clinical and clinical studies, that NMD is highly vital in ALS defect. ALS is the body neuron disease and microfluiding technology is currently being employed to develop more of these models. And this is actually a NMD on a chip, you can see on the right hand side, where this protocol, I'll go a little faster, it's quite complex with high technology, design and fabrication, use of a 3D physiological and pathophysiological modeling model consisting of motor neurons, actual neurons, natural muscles connected using microfluiding device and equally facilitating imaging and quantitative functional assessment. So this NMD chip enables near time live imaging of external outgrowth, NMD formation and muscle maturation as well as synchronization of motor neuron activity and muscle contraction under optogeny. Now, that's another technique that is used in the brain, using light optogeny. So optogeny control for the study of normal physiology events, some of the studies published very early, two thousand twenty and after the nature of it. So I think I have come to the end of my presentation from the arrow poison, the NMD on a chip. So I wish to conclude, the neuromuscular junction is a remarkable biological structure that plays a pivotal role in enabling movement and muscle functioning in my body. The structural and functional consistency throughout the body as well as influencing various natural explanations and therapeutic applications made the subject of great interest in both research and medical practice. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Professor Badhavi, thank you for your very clear presentation. I'm sure it is very useful for the medical students too. Now, this presentation is open for discussion.
Thank you very much, Professor Badhavi, for your great fascinating talk. You have simply fascinating, you know, Mr. Badhavi. Now, I have called Dr. Russell to my party, that also has neurotoxin, which causes paralysis of the external of the muscles. Much better than that, this is a disease. So if I was to look at a patient after neurotoxin, in a way, in a way, of Russell's white body, you find the patient has bilateral doses, the external of the papilla. And then, sweeping of the forehead, which is a compensation for the doses, the traction of the front, that is possible. So my question is, what is the reason for this very specific neurotoxicity of Russell's viper venom, which causes paralysis very specific, that of the external of the muscles, much better than other skin diseases, including the responsibility.
Yeah, thank you for this interesting question. Now, the snake, when we, the problem is now Russell's viper, of course, the research is less focused on the neuro, the neuropathic, neuro, neurological effects, more on the risk of the body. And so therefore, we have no experience, we are just daily break and other bodies. But there are some Indian studies which have come up, they are probably, the, I don't know, you asked about selectivity of the different muscles.
Like the, we discussed in the neuromuscular junction, transport, the motor neuron, the fact that my thoughts go back to Or we used to gain the neuromuscular junction strength and transfer, the motor neuron, the natural effect that my thoughts go back to physiologies when Professor Lee, Professor Senior, and the nature towards the same area. And it was greater than the spool senior. We come to the nature of this kind of piece of chalk, drawing the border, that's given the paper all about neuro, all this neuromuscular sensation, they explain the release of acetylcholine, linking up with the void in the brain and positive polarization and eventual muscle contraction. But very simplistic worship, when I listen to a dog, it shows how complex the neuromuscular junction is. To give it that background, at least complexity, this is a neuromuscular explanation to explain this specific thing. Now, from a major's point of view, it looks really not necessary, okay? They inject the winner, analyze the prey and then swallow it. Now, that's why they pray with a mass, no problem, the neuromuscular entity analyzes the win, the prey. There's risk to muscle paralysis, if you can't breathe, there is. But now, Russell's viper, it is causing just paralysis of the external open muscles. It's preservation of the explanation, which we don't like. What it is, or the major, it looks somewhat impolite. Anyway, is there, is there a neurophysiologist explanation of this specific? We can figure it out from where these other proteins are talking, they have not made a bit of a.
Yeah, maybe, I have no research paper to, maybe, but if I look at neurophysically, but only issue is now you are talking about extra, 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 your muscles been affected, but without the fundamental.
And even other, can I speak to muscles also?
Yeah.
Legs are not affected, rest of the muscles are affected. Which is not paralyzed, which is better.
So it was, yeah, most likely hypothesis would be that the selective, selectivity of the different nerve terminal. Then we can see the nerve terminals are different, there are immunological aspects also here. So I don't know, I have very difficult to explain this, but then there are some, some reflexes also that the same neurons branching out and going. So going by that, I think this differential effect of different muscles most likely could be related to that different, I think, that different, maybe muscle, muscle proteins are different. Maybe the immunological things are different, but I have no, there's no research, this is good research, I think, as a whole. So because what happened in Russell's viper, even our study, we didn't look at Russell's viper because it's well-known for other assets. So we can look at the neurological part as well. I have another, I believe in the central, this is also all continuum, the anterodermia, the, the, and so on. So there can be central effect because anterodermia, where the neuromuscular junction start is also like affected. There are so many things happening there. There is inhibition, there is auto-inhibition and there is a reverse inhibition. So that kind of thing, we can say maybe possibly. Possibly, I don't know, there's good research, it's a good research, we have to, thank you.
Any other questions?
Professor Deera Singh, thank you so much for the wonderful lecture. Fascinated by the last week that we talked about the NMD on a chip. And how do you, how do you construct this, of course, because so many applications like that, shrill advice, including innovations, something that we like, how do you be proud of in presenting? Is it a cellular culture technique where you have one set, single set, you know, uh, slice and pull, hunch and here regularly and then we heal that, you know, the inclusion of a life, life system?
Yeah, it's a cell culture system, where they use the actual muscle and actual nerve. But beyond that, they have a mechanism so that you can actually use optogeny. You can actually look at, now, optogeny is a technique where you can light in the brain. Optogeny is a technique, you can go into the brain and light the brain and look at it. That's another, that is for the, that is for the designers and other things which are developed. But here also, you can look at that and then use dies and various things, you see microfluidic environment. So that is how they're made in the US, University of California and at their academic places, particularly from the bioengineering side, not from the inside. The research is still at the bioengineering level.
Interested in the work, are you, as well, you're saying, they think, that's why I asked especially.
Any other questions? Okay, that says of questions, let me conclude this session. Now, today we had a very interactive session. Firstly, very, very rare opportunity listening to a Nobel Prize in Medicine, that is Professor Hartler. And then the question and answer session, answer session with him. Where he spoke about, in his case, he can change the field of specialty and then he gone up winning a Nobel Prize. Now, in our case, Sri Lanka, we are not in a position to change the field of specialty, but in our case, it's important now for us to change the field of study in research. Now, most of our science academics, they go overseas and get used to highly sophisticated equipment and then you undertake, you undertake experiments and come back to Sri Lanka and get very frustrated. And actually, you can change your field of study and start from grassroots levels. That was a very good example. And then Professor Badri Deera Singh, I knew Badri as an excellent teacher. And that was an excellent teacher and a tough fit title, very good, that he will stick to that. And thank you so much, Badri, for that enlightening lecture. And then, and for all of you in the audience, thank you so much for getting in this session. Thank you so much.
I call you invite Professor Aindralal Balasuriya, the Dean, Faculty of Medicine of General Sir John Kottala Defense University, to kindly hand over the token of appreciation to the speaker, Professor Badri Deera Singh. Thank you, sir. I would like to call you, invite Major General Lal Gunasekara, Director Metropolitan Campus of General Sir John Kottala Defense University, to kindly hand over the token of appreciation to the Chair, Senior Professor Mirani Beersuriya. Thank you very much, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, we have come to the end.